Family and you've really been in the trenches in the city for so many years helping, helping kids get into drug treatment programs, dealing with quality of life issues, public safety issues, but you and your family have a lot of credibility in Boston and we have respect for you.
It was amazing. I served 18 or 19 years as a clerk magistrate, working with Jack Boulger. He and I developed a very good friendship and at the juvenile court as a clerk magistrate. And I made an intentional decision. I went to him and I said, "I'm going to resign." He says, "Why are you going to do that?" I said, "Because too many kids are dying in the street." And I had had a heart attack when I was working at the courthouse. And some pastors were saying to me, "If you leave the state and work at your church to help young people in the church and in the community, we will subsidize your salary." So I resigned and my children said, "Dad, you did what? You what?" So my pension wasn't what it was would have been had all those other people who stayed for 30 or 40 years was going to be, but I've had a good run here at the church, 31 years. And one last comment before we start. I was at the South Shore and your dad was there, I think with some grandchildren in the eating court. He saw me, he said, "Bruce, get over here." I said, "Yes, sir." He said, "You were a pain in my backside when I was the mayor and you were trying to run the city." And we sat down and had a great conversation. So I really appreciate you being here. I appreciate your dad and your family. And one of the questions that I wanted to ask you is, you are no, in my opinion, you are no longer in what I call the hot seat, being the president of the Boston City Council. What is it like just now returning to be a Boston City Councilor?
Well, I enjoyed being president for two years. I liked engaging and working and developing administrative policy for the body for the last two years as the council president, leading the body, especially during difficult, challenging times. But now that I'm not the president, it gives me an opportunity to focus more on District 2 specific issues and to get engaged in more policy as well. So I do have some more time because I'm not doing as much administrative duties as the council president, but I'm still active, still engaged in what happens on the city council, trying to provide the best positive leadership I can to city councilors that have recently started. And also trying to reach as many young city employees as well, not just city councilors, but trying to give city employees encouragement. I know the important work they play in our city and they deserve to be recognized. But I also enjoy coming into the office every day, showing up, being accountable, and doing the best I can for the residents of Boston.
Hello, Boston Bridge Radio.
I also think it's critical during challenging times like this as a city that we work together, we listen to each other and treat each other with respect. That's a part of, that's part of being a city councilor. It's part of being an elected official. It's trying to bring out the best in people. And I hope that's what I was able to do as city council president.
Now, I like how we just worked that. You saw that I was on the phone and you carried the conversation without stopping with dead air. That's great. We have on the phone line right now Brother Wright. Let me see if I can bring him up. Hello, Mr. Wright. How are you this morning?
Good morning. How are you Pastor Wall and Councilor Flynn?
Good morning, my friend. How are you, sir?
Very well.
Do you have any comments? Have you been able to listen?
Yes, as you might say Pastor Wall, Ed Flynn and I have history. We go back quite a way. And very importantly, we had a chance to work together when his father, former Mayor Ray Flynn, ran for Congress in 1998. But prior to that, in the 1980s, when Mayor Flynn appointed Dallas Buntie, the former state rep, as the head of the Boston Housing Authority, Dallas appointed me to be Communications Director for the BHA as together, we with the mayor's office, went through the desegregation of public housing in Boston. As I'm sure Ed remembers, we had national media coverage, New York Times, 60 Minutes, 48 Hours, Washington Post. And Arthur Jones in the mayor's office and I worked together to deal with the history of something that some of the national media wanted to tie into the desegregation process. I also want to mention that Councilor Flynn, now having stepped down from the city council presidency after his term, was succeeded by City Councilor Ruth Z. Louie June, who I had the pleasure of interviewing for Columbia College 20 years ago, when she was a senior at Boston Latin School. I would say that she's done very well, having gone to Columbia, Harvard Law School, the Kennedy School at Harvard, and having been the lead attorney for U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren when Warren ran for president. And another person we have in common is Lee Jackson, who may have been appointed as his second city treasurer. Lee's father was not professor at Columbia Journalism. He was appointed to an international financial board by President Clinton. Sadly, he was also aboard Ron Brown's plane.
Well, let me, so you're saying you followed and watched the leadership of former President Flynn, who's now just a district council, but as it relates to the present, president of the Boston City Council, you also have a relationship with her. And are you working on any projects with her? Are you working on any projects with the Boston City Council?
Well, I certainly have been following her work on the council. I was very pleased that she was able to be the individual who helped with determining the city council map last year. That was acceptable to Mayor Wu and to the judge in the case and the councilors. I think that it was very helpful that she had the legal background and of course, the experience, having worked nationally with Senator Warren, that she was able to help with the council agreeing on a process that led to clarity and avoided disruption that would have taken place if people were not able to determine where they lived or where their residence was in relationship to the district they would represent.
Well, Brother Wright, I'm gonna have to hold you up. I appreciate you calling in. I've got some questions I need to ask the counselor, but I appreciate you calling in this morning.
You're welcome.
Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you, Bill. It was good to talk to you.
So one of the other questions I wanted to ask you about no longer being the president is what is it that you can't do now, now that you're no longer the president of the Boston City Council? What we, you mean, you had your power, you had the authority, now you're back sitting with everybody else. What do you miss about having the appointment of being the president?
I miss the engagement with my colleagues and the one-on-one conversations I would have with them in trying to help them the best I could navigate politics, policy, city departments. I enjoyed, I enjoyed that part of it especially, giving advice or mentorship and in working with young people, young elected officials. That was the part I missed the most. It was rewarding for me, trying to provide some leadership, providing some assistance or help to my colleagues. I don't necessarily have that same relationship I do now as just a city councilor, but that's what I miss the most is the interaction I had with my colleagues, talking about issues and talking about challenges that I've had or they have almost every day.
So you were saying that also now that you're no longer the president, you can give some additional time to your own district. Are there any district issues or concerns that you want to talk about while we're on the air? New initiatives that you are working on?
Yeah, Pastor, my focus over the last seven years has always been really neighborhood services, the nuts and bolts of city government, quality of life issues, whether it's pest control, whether it's traffic enforcement, pedestrian safety, clean streets, healthy neighborhoods, safe streets. I also have focused a lot of time and energy effort on working with the Boston Police, on community policing initiatives, public safety challenges. So I enjoy those types of issues. I haven't gotten necessarily involved in the major policy issues of the day. I've kind of focused on how city government operates and how it impacts people's lives, whether it's public works, whether it's water and sewer, pest control inspections, bus pickups for kids. I have a staff of six people and they've been with me for the entire time. They haven't left my office. I rely on them for a lot of work.
You have six staff persons now?
Yes.
How many did you have when you were the president?
I had, I had seven.
Okay, so you just added one more.
I had one more. And one of them recently left and she became the city, she became the chief of staff for Counselor Santana. But I've been fortunate to have a group of staff members that have been with me the entire time, but they are dedicated and focused on constituent services, quality of life issues. And I represent District 2, which is South Boston, the South End, Chinatown, Bay Village. But I also have a little bit of the Back Bay, almost heading towards the Fenway area, along with the South Boston waterfront.
So how many years have you been a counselor?
It's going on seven years.
Okay, so we've seen some of the city councilors leaving the council and moving off into other areas or running for other offices. Are you comfortable just being where you're at, staying there, and working on constituency services for another seven years?
I won't be here for another seven years. I do love the job. I do think there's a period of time that you can stay on the council and be effective. And after a certain period of time, it's probably best to move on, give someone else the opportunity to serve. But I think I would serve the maximum on the city council is 10 years.
Don't scare me because some of us old timers look to people like you who have been there for a while to talk with you and to say, "Help, we need your assistance if you're no longer there." Like Mike Flaherty used to do a lot with me in the streets many years ago, and he was one of the go-to people as a district city counselor. He's no longer there. Why have some of these city councilors made an intentional decision to exit?
Well, you are right. When we lost Michael Flaherty on the council, he was an exceptional leader. He knew the city as well as anybody. And it's a big loss not having him on the council. I think other councilors have left for different reasons. Some were voted out by their constituents. Others decided that they wanted a change in their life. Sometimes politics, as you know, Pastor, can be an unhealthy profession and a lot of stress or a lot of turmoil in your life and in politics. And some wanted an opportunity to do something different. I still love my job. I love the city. I want to see the city improve. I want to see a city that works for everybody. And I'm willing to give it another couple of years as a city counselor. I don't necessarily want to stay on forever. I want to make a contribution and then give the job or let the constituents elect someone else.
What would you do if you were not a Boston City Councilor? Do you have ambitions you can talk about here on the air today?
I eventually would like to look at other possibilities outside of government, including working in the federal government on whether it's defense issues, whether it's on veterans issues, labor issues. That's a goal of mine. I'm still young enough to maybe move to Washington. But on the other hand, I still love Boston. I want to see Boston be successful. I want to see our Commonwealth be successful as well. So I don't necessarily have any plans to run for any other political positions.
I find that that's amazing because your name has been banted about as it relates to running for mayor, you know, your name and also senators over in South Boston, their names have been mentioned. So that's off the table for you or you don't know right now? If that door opened, would you step into it?
Yeah, it's a position that I know well from my father when he served as mayor. I know it's a very challenging, difficult position. It's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, limited, limited time with your family. I've seen that up close with my father.
You've had to live it, yeah.
Yeah, especially during challenging times in the 80s. Sometimes I would see my father once, once a week, maybe on a Saturday. And then, you know, he would take us in his car and would go to various events throughout the, throughout the day or on a Sunday. But it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily a healthy environment for young people to live in. And I speak from experience, being in politics. But having said that, I do love Boston. And if there's an opportunity for me to serve, whether it's in elective office or in the community, that's something I'm going to hopefully continue. I'm just not going to walk away. I think I still have something to offer, but I'm not considering any future office right now.
I was surprised when I saw that Erin Murphy was running for clerk of the, is it the Superior Court?
Clerk of SJC.
Superior District Court.
Yeah, that's the Mara Doyle position that she's currently in.
That came out of nowhere when I, when I read about it and I saw it. Do you wish her well? Would you want her to stay on the council? Has she been an ally, a supporter of your initiatives?
Yeah, she's been an excellent colleague. She's done a very good job. She works hard. She takes the job seriously. She focuses on the neighborhood services, quality of life issues. And I respect people that work hard. I respect people that show up. I think she'll do a good job as clerk. And I wish her nothing but the success. I wish she would stay as a counselor because we're gonna miss her leadership. But I do understand that people want to leave for various reasons. But she has a tremendous opportunity to be the clerk. I think she's working hard, running for reelection, and I'm supporting her as well.
Yeah. I, let's just wade into this and then we'll step out of it. Under your leadership, I would watch the city council hearings. I wasn't downtown, but I watched them on the computer. And you were trying to manage an unruly group of men and women. The media used all kinds of terms that I won't use to describe the city council during that period. One, has it changed? And two, what was going on that caused the councilors to disrupt what you were trying to do in providing leadership as a council president?
It has changed. There's a new group of elected officials that take their job more professionally and are more responsible. But you are right. The, when I was on the council as the president, I did have an unruly group of city councilors. And several of them were voted out by their, by their colleagues. I felt that they didn't bring, they didn't show up every day in a professional manner. And their professionalism hurt the body, it hurt them. But they, but my colleagues didn't, they weren't mature to be city councilors at that time. They did not understand the job of working together, of addressing neighborhood services of quality of life. And it was, we were coming out of the pandemic. There was a lot of friction on social media. And we were working from home. And it was just a bad atmosphere for elected officials not to be in the building. You didn't develop the one-on-one relationships with your colleagues. And I think social media did have some impact on my colleagues. But on the other hand, I felt that several of them that did lose the election didn't, didn't have the maturity to be effective city councilors.
And their constituency saw that and decided not to vote for them.
That's correct.
I'm not gonna mention a name on this next thought and question. I received a call from the Boston Herald a couple of days ago, and they wanted me to comment on, and I'm not gonna name the name of the city counselor, who they were saying is missing a lot of hearings, is missing a lot of votes. How can a counselor do that if you've been sent there to serve and provide leadership and provide constituency services, if you're not showing up for the hearings? How does a counselor expect to be effective? And when you were the council president, would you bring a counselor like that into your office and have a conversation and say, "Look, you can't do this"? How would you handle something like that?
I would try to do that. I would try to encourage everybody to show up every day. I think it's important to be in the office, to be in the building, to show up at nine o'clock and stay there till four o'clock, deal with quality of life issues, deal with constituent services, and then go to the community and do your community meetings at nighttime. I think you need to be in the office six, seven hours a day and then, and then do the job at nighttime as well.
But that's not your responsibility to say, "You will be here." That's their constituency's responsibility to call them and say, "We're not voting for you because you're not here," right?
Yeah, that's right. It's not the job of the city council president. The city council president has no authority to tell them what to do, to tell a colleague what to do. We, I can politely, respectfully encourage someone to show up to work, but they don't have to necessarily listen to me. They don't have to listen to me. Who are they responsible for? To? The residents that put them in office, their constituents. But, but you are right, Pastor Wall. I do have, we do have a lot of colleagues, and I don't want to be, I don't want to criticize my colleagues, but many of them unfortunately don't show up for work.
And their constituency will only see that if they're not there on Wednesday, primarily because that's when everyone is supposed to be there. During the week, they can hop, skip, and jump and go anywhere and do whatever they want. So that, that makes the council weak if you don't have the city councils who are elected by those who wanted them in office doing the job by being there.
Yeah, the, the only requirement really is to be there on Wednesday. But the other part of the job is listening and learning about what's happening in city government. For example, this week, last week rather, we had a hearing that was poorly attended. It was about a grant going to the Boston Police for officer wellness and officer mental health counseling. It was a grant for maybe $200,000. And that money would be for peer assistance after response to a tragic accident or scene a police officer was involved. And we have high suicide rate in Boston and a high suicide rate of police across the country. This is a critical program. Unfortunately, Pastor Wall, we only had a handful of city councilors learning about that issue. And it's those types of, those types of issues that, if you're not in the building and you're not participating in that hearing, you're doing a disservice to your constituents by not being there and learning about city workers, the impact that stress has on their life, or you're not learning about public education related issues. You need to be in the building.
We have a caller. Caller, go ahead. You're live on the air.
Completely clear to the counselor. And note this respect, it's just a simple human factor. Nobody in this world cannot succeed without failure because failure teaches people what to do the next time when success eventually comes. Because without that failure, without learning to not try, you can never succeed. It's a common, basic human factor.
Right. We didn't receive your earlier comment. We just, so could you repeat the beginning of your comment? Were you, were you asking a question or making a statement?
I was making a statement though.
Okay.
If that's okay, yeah.
Okay. So give us the, the beginning of it because we didn't hear that.
Oh, my statement goes that you have to fail first. You can't, nobody in this world cannot succeed. Without the failure, you can never succeed because failure is something that's educational.
Right. So where is the failure and the discussion that we're having? Who's failing?
The city council because as a registered voter, yes, I understand it takes time for everything. But as a registered voter, I feel like the city councilors are just doing what they want to do. Because I, I talked to these councilors in the, on the streets and I get either a lie or the simple old-fashioned politics going along the question. That's why I said that the city--
Well, do you interact with your city counselor?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And are you satisfied with the service that they provide for you?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So what is your, so what is your role the next time they run for office?
Well, my part is, first and foremost, hold them accountable. And then if they're not doing the job that I put them in, which is to help with my policies, then they get voted out too.
Right. But it's not just for you to decide to vote for somebody else. It's for you to mobilize with other citizens in your district so that that person can feel the full brunt of your dissatisfaction by voting for another candidate, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Any direct question you want to ask the counselor?
If you can answer it. My question is, how come they're listening to a two-term system for these politics? We need four years. That's it. You can't go over six, eight, 10, whatever. Because for far too long, we have too many people in office that have been there way too long.
So you want term limits. Okay, so there's a double question in your question. And number one, how long can a city council president serve? And then are there any term limits on running as a district or at-large councilor?
Yeah, it's a good question. And thank you to the caller. A city council president can serve one consecutive term, and then that person could not run for reelection as council president. However, the city, that person could run again after the, the next term is up, the following term is up. So you basically have to skip a term. And that's how you could run again as city council president. For a, for a city council itself, there are no term limits. You could run for as many terms as you want. The same applies to the mayor's office as well. The city council is a two-year term. The mayor's office is a four-year term. But I agree with you, caller. I think there should be some type of term limits in for a city council, whether that's six years, whether that's eight years, or 10 years. I think, I think that's an important discussion to have. It also enables young people to think about getting involved in politics. It also forces the elected official, the particular city council, to work hard, to engage residents, to be active, to be on scene, and don't take the job seriously. And if you know you're only going to be there for four years or six years, you might work as hard as you possibly can during those six years, knowing that you want to give it your best shot before you leave. So I think there's some merit into, into your argument about term limits. And it's something I would, I would consider supporting.
Caller, thank you very much for, oh, let me ask you a question. How are you listening to us? On the FM signal or on the internet?
The FM signal.
Goodbye. Goodbye.
Thank you, caller.
Thank you. What are some of the-- What are some of the initiatives that you're working on for your district?
One issue that I think is impacting every district across the city, pest control.
I knew you were going to go there.
And I think people are getting tired of me talking about it. But just as an example, Pastor, we have 14 certified pest control specialists in the city of Boston. They work Monday through Friday. So we don't have pest control inspectors on the weekends. Friday afternoon at five till Monday morning. But that's when we really need them, is over the weekends when people are, you know, putting their trash out, when people are getting, you know, takeout in their parties. But that issue is critical. It's impacting every neighborhood. It's about public health, public safety, quality of life. Public health, Chinatown and Roxbury have the highest asthma rates in the city of any neighborhood. Some of that is due to the large number of mice and rats that contribute to a high asthma rate. That's one issue I've been focused on. Other issues I've been focused on is public education. I represent a large Chinese community in the city. I also support a language and communication access for residents that don't speak English. That's been a big priority of mine, is trying to support city government to communicate in languages other than English. And certainly pedestrian safety is another issue I've focused on. The roads and sidewalks are, need a lot of care. And I think we need to do a better job on pedestrian safety. Traffic enforcement is critical. We have a speed limit of 25 miles an hour. I think it should be reduced and with enhanced public enforcement of the miles per hour. Community policing is also critical.
I've seen more cities' streets with the bumps going up now. So as it relates to, you were talking about, is this road control? Because I read, I was reading about something that you were initiating. So what is your plan?
My plan would, my plan would be to have a standalone city department that deals specifically with pest control.
24 hours a day?
24 hours a day, seven days a week, such as the police, such as the EMS fire department. I think it's that critical of an issue. I think we need to ensure they have the resources, the personnel, the support to effectively do the job. If you don't solve that problem, people will leave the city. And it is a concern of mine that after the pandemic or during the pandemic, the amount of rats and mice in the city has increased significantly. And we need to coordinate, streamline our services on this issue and coordinate more effectively. The people that are doing the job, they're doing a good job. They just need more support. They need more services. They need more support from us as a government. And that's an issue that I'm going to continue focusing on. We recently had a hearing. The city council is going to vote on it very soon, whether we should have a standalone city department. If we vote in favor of it, goes to the mayor's office for her decision.
Do you have a sense of where your colleagues are at in supporting this?
Some have told me that they are supporting it. And some have said that they don't think it's necessary to have a standalone city department to deal with that. But I argue the status quo can't continue with pest control. We need to do things differently. We need to enhance this issue to a top issue in the city. And neighborhood services, these quality of life issues, are the nuts and bolts of city government. We need to do a better job in addressing them.
So when you talk about neighborhood services, when Larry Ellison was a police detective, on his broadcast and talking to me, he would share information to help us to understand what's going on with respect to the violence in the city. There's been an uptick, as I've been told, regarding the violence, especially with young people in school. Does the city council talk about that? The city council is coming up with a plan to address this issue of violence in the streets and the school?
I have come out with a plan, along with councillor Flaherty, when he was in office, along with councillor Murphy. I do think, and I still think, we need metal detectors in our schools that do work, that are plugged in, that are operational. I think we do need some type of public safety support in the schools. I was a substitute schoolteacher for a period of time in Charleston High School and Southie High. But the school police there, Pastor Bruce, I thought they did a great job helping the kids. They almost acted as role models as well. They listened to the young men, young men of color mostly, and tried to develop a positive relationship with them. They weren't the enemy. They were a role model, in my opinion. And we got them out of the school system.
Right.
I think that was a mistake. I think that was, I think that hurt the city. I think that hurt the students the most. I'm concerned about public safety in our schools. I think we do need public safety professionals. I think we do need metal detectors. We need to have an environment that is healthy and safe for learning and teaching.
I've already gone on record to say that I support the metal detectors. I don't understand how a school can function. We had metal detectors in the wand up at Shavuot Skating Ring when we were working with young people. What have some of your colleagues who oppose the metal detectors, what's their reason for saying, no, we can't have it?
I think their reasoning is it's a poor image for children to go to school passing through a metal detector as if this is a police state. I think that's kind of their argument, that metal detectors sets up a false image for the child that the environment that you're in is unsafe. And for some reason, that impacts their learning or social interaction with children. I don't believe that. I think parents want to see their children go to a school that's healthy and safe. And I think parents support having their children, all children, go through metal detectors so that their child is safe to learn in a healthy and safe environment in a particular school.
When I walk through a metal detector, I'm feeling, I feel safe walking through at the airport or walking through the State House wherever I'm going. Even the young people, I wish the young people were polled because they want to feel safe in school. As long as, as long as the environment, once you get past the metal detectors, it's not a police state in the school. If the officers are interacting and teachers are interacting with the young people and they feel safe in that environment, that's what we want. I don't understand, unless these elected officials are trying to make a point with their constituency regarding the metal detectors, I oppose that they are saying no to metal detectors in the schools. We need them.
We need them, and there's been many instances where knives or other weapons have gotten into the schools. We've been fortunate that we haven't had an incident that escalated to something severe. I think if some type of incident did happen, we would have to reevaluate that policy. But I, I'm again calling for all metal detectors to be in schools, to be operational as well. I think some school principals have the option of having metal detectors in the school. But then they also have the option of not using the metal detectors, even if it is in the school. I think they should always be operational.
Mayor Wu wanted to move the O'Briens School to West Roxbury. And then there was a hue and cry from teachers and students saying it's difficult to get there, we don't want to do that. And so she changed her mind, which I give her credit for. She didn't have to do that. What was your position on the move of the O'Briens School from where it's presently at over to West Roxbury?
I came out against that move at the very beginning. The O'Briens is a critical school. It's doing an exceptional job. It needs love and care. It probably needs a new building. But moving it out of the heart of the black community in Boston would be a terrible loss. Not only moving it to West Roxbury, but right here in the black community of Dorchester, of Roxbury, you are close to medical facilities, you are close to universities. Those internships in partnerships with Northeastern or Wentworth or Mashden or Hospital or Beth Israel Hospital, they're critical for students to learn about programs that could benefit them. But having a facility, having an educational program in West Roxbury, where there is no MBTA easy access, and students coming from Charleston or East Boston would have a very difficult time getting there in the morning, in the afternoon. It would limit their ability to get these internships. It would limit everyone's ability to get an internship because you'd be coming from West Roxbury, and then you have to go to Dorchester to do three or four hours at a college or university or hospital. But I'm glad, I'm glad the city is not making that move. But what I would advocate for, Pastor Bruce, is a brand-new, state-of-the-art O'Briens School in the heart of the black community in Boston. I think it's critical. The school is doing an exceptional job. Their academic results are promising. And we need to support those students.
Where would that school be located? What would you recommend? What part of the city if they were to build a new school?
I like that area where it's currently at, if there are any other spaces in Roxbury or Dorchester. But that area in and around Regiglouis Track is a great area. The area, maybe there's some opportunities in the South End as well for a brand-new school. But I think it has to be in the middle of the black community, whether that's Roxbury, Dorchester, or even on the border of the South End.
So when Mayor Wu was making this recommendation, did you approach her at all or her office to say, you know, I want to see you, I want to talk to you about this? Or did you let it happen in the context of the council having hearings on this?
I think I did both. The council did have hearings, and I came out publicly against it. I did let the mayor's team know that I supported keeping the O'Briens School in the heart of the black community, not making the move to West Roxbury. So I tried to do my due diligence and advocate for my constituents. I do go over to West Roxbury High School frequently. My son plays baseball for Boston Latin. And I watch his games. That's where his home games are. But going from South Boston to West Roxbury, you know, especially during traffic, could take me an hour and a half at times.
Well, one of the other questions I want to ask you as we keep moving forward. I have three children. Two of them live on the South Shore. One has an apartment and lives in the city, but needs help with the rent for the apartment. So how are we going to keep our young people in the city when the cost to buy a house, condo, bedroom, an apartment? What are we going to do about that? Because even the black churches in Boston, The Boston Globe wrote three stories about the black churches leaving the city. They're following their constituents who are leaving the city. What are we going to do to help our children have a place in the city where they can live and raise a family and thrive? What can the council do?
Yeah, that's the number one question facing families in the city and young people. The average home now in greater Boston is $900,000 a year. And how could you possibly get a down payment on a mortgage for that type of fee? But, you know, I think Boston needs to continue building development, especially in the seaport. But that money, we need to increase and ensure that the linkage is working effectively. We're building housing and ensuring that the percent of affordable housing units is increased. And ensure that neighborhoods benefit from that economic development. And I think we need workforce housing. And we need housing for young people just starting out, a first-time--
That's workforce housing.
Workforce housing for working-class families. It doesn't have to be a beautiful home, but it has to be an opportunity for that person to have access to housing. And at some point, maybe move up and get something larger. But we need more workforce housing in the city, throughout every neighborhood of Boston. I even think we need more affordable housing in the, I call it the South Boston waterfront, the seaport area. We don't have enough affordable housing there.
You don't have any more space in South Boston, do you?
We have space in the South Boston waterfront.
Okay.
And I'd like to see more development there specifically for affordable housing. I also know the importance of, I represent the most residents living in public housing as well of any district city councillor across the city. Public housing is also critical. But are we able to partner with BHA and help people that are in BHA get into some of these lottery systems? But also, it's difficult to complete these applications. You need some type of assistance, getting your paperwork, getting your forms, applications in line. The city does a very good job with that. I think that program needs to be expanded. First-time home buyers, giving them the opportunity to buy a home without a down payment, helping them with the interest rate. The insurance on a particular mortgage should be waived for young people starting out, PMI. So there's options that we can do. But I think we need, it's going to take all of us working together to ensure that Boston is not just a city of the wealthy and low-income families. We need a strong working class in Boston.
I saw a story on the national news that talked about Boston being number six or seven, being the highest rents in the country. So I'm going to switch. What are your thoughts on the migrant communities coming into Boston and being placed and being fed? And there are a lot of people who are feeling that that takes away from dealing with those who are citizens of our own community. Have you been involved in any of the migrant influx issues?
Yes, we have many facilities such as that in my district, including South Boston and South Boston, many in the South End. Boston is a very compassionate city. We're compassionate people. I do think at some point that we can't help everybody that wants to come to Boston, to come to Massachusetts. We just don't have the money. We don't have the resources. We don't have the housing. And we don't want to turn people away. We don't want to hurt children that are in need of food. But on the other hand, we just can't sustain that level of compassion that we continue to do. And I think we have to ensure that we are fiscally responsible to our residents and ensure that we can't live over our means and continue spending money that we don't have. Boston and Massachusetts is a right to housing state, which means anyone that comes into Boston or Massachusetts is almost guaranteed access to housing. I just don't think we can sustain that any longer.
Right, right, right. And one last question on this, and then I want to open the mic for you to talk as we wind down. As it relates to the migrant communities, when Mayor Wu and the governor were talking about housing them at the Melania Cass Center, did you weigh in on that at all? Were you opposed to that? Did you support it? Did you have mixed feelings about it? And does the council have a group or a group that's dealing with the issue of the migrant population?
On that situation, I did not weigh in on that issue. On, on that situation, I did not weigh in, um, on that issue. I had a similar incident, a similar project coming into my district almost at the same time, which was on, um, right at the Fort Point area. Um, and I also had one in the Andrew Square area. I focused mostly on those two, um-
Okay.
-those two housing issues, because they were in my district. And I didn't get involved in that particular issue.
So, so, uh, th- that was the governor and the mayor working to ask? Do they come and ask you and say, "I need your support, because we need to open up some housing"? Or do they just do it?
The, one of them didn't go over well. Um, and, and we had challenges with the nonprofit was not providing relevant information that received a contract from the state to house these, um, residents on Farnsworth Street, I believe it was, in, in the, in the Fort Point area. Um, but residents were concerned about the migrants moving in for, for many reasons. But the biggest reason, Pastor Bruce, is there was a lack of communication. Residents felt like their voices were not heard during the process, and they wanted to know what was happening. And city leaders or state leaders or the nonprofit were not providing them with the information that they had. They basically told them, "This is happening. Um, it's going to be happening in several weeks. We don't have the details right now. We don't know how it's going to impact, impact you." But that type of message does not go over well with, with the community. The community wants to be engaged and active and involved before a decision is made, so that their voices can be heard and, and are respected. And if you don't have the community weigh in, and the community's not part of the process, um, you're gonna have a difficult time with the, a particular, particular project.
Wow. This is, uh, we've gone a whole hour, and, uh, I don't know if you know, Minister Priscilla is coming up next.
Okay.
Um, final comments from you. Oh, well, before I go there, if, if I can have the time. I would like us to consider you coming in periodically, either when you have something or we, we need to talk about something. Or if you would also be willing to do a, um, uh, either every two weeks, um, uh, some kind of a policy statement that you can share, and I can put it on the station, it will run automatically. This is City Councillor Ed Flynn. And you talk for one minute or two minutes about a policy issue or just something, so that people hear your voice more frequently and, and believe, and that you are a part of what we're trying to do here at our community. Would you be open to that?
I'd be honored to do that, Pastor Bruce, and I'd be honored to engage, continue to engage residents about neighborhood services, quality of life issues. Residents want to have a voice in their city government. And whether they, whether I represent them on the council or not, they can feel, feel free for them to contact me. Usually, usually email is the best way. Ed dot Flynn at Boston dot gov. Uh, but I would love to come on as frequently as you invite me. And I love talking about local issues. Residents want to talk about local issues. Certainly, national issues are important. International issues are important. But the nuts and bolts of, of city government is, is what real, is what residents really want to talk about.
Well, I appreciate you saying yes to being on today. This is just the start of us getting the engine going, and we'll do it again. We'll, we'll keep promoting the fact that you're coming on. And I think it's healthy for the city, for us to be doing this, um, as city councillor and a pastor, uh, from two different districts, but finding a way to work for all of city of Boston. So I thank you. And for those of you who are listening, coming up next in just about two minutes will be Minister Priscilla, People Power with Priscilla. Stay there, do not go anywhere. We'll be right back with more in just a second.